All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the June 6, 2022 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag and please remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the resolve of liberty and justice for all.
I believe it would be appropriate at this time with all of the violence and shootings that we've had around our country for a moment of silence for all the victims from Buffalo, New York, for all the victims from Tulsa, Oklahoma, and I know that this last one tugged at all of our hearts with all of the schoolchildren from Uvalde, Texas. We ask for your prayers to help all of the families through this difficult time of their grief and their struggles. We ask for peace in our world, and I would ask for a moment of silence in memory of all those victims of all the tragedies, not only these three, but all the tragedies throughout the United States that we've had over the years. I would also ask for all the police officers and healthcare professionals that have been killed senselessly also and their families to keep all of them in prayer. So I would ask for a moment of silence for all of them. Thank you. All right, roll call, please, Chris.
Grace Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Verchay.
Here.
Dorell Jefferson.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Sapidi.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kubal.
Here.
And for the record, War Two Alderman Jefferson and our city administrator Jim Marino, they are both excused for this evening's meeting. You have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on May 16, 2022. Motion would be in order.
Some move.
We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Verchay for the approval of the city council meeting minutes held on May 16, 2022. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yeah.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
You also have before you the minutes of the work session that was held on May 16, 2022. Motion would be in order.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Verchay, seconded by Alderman Dyke for the approval of the work session minutes held on May 16, 2022. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
And John Verchay.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
You also have before you the minutes of the public hearing minutes of May 16, 2022. Motion would be in order.
Some move.
We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Verchay for the approval of the minutes of the public hearing held on May 16, 2022. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And finally, you have the minutes of the work session held on May 23, 2022. Motion would be in order.
Some move.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Verchay for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on May 23, 2022. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, our business promotion tonight is Ms. Ally Brandolino, who is here representing and is chairman, chairwoman of the Festa Italiana for 2022. So Ally, the podium is all yours.
Yes, we are hosting our 22nd annual Festa Italiana at the American Italian Cultural Society here in Crest Hill. It's a three-day event. It's free admission. Friday will be open from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. We will be having John Elvis Lyons along with One Foot in the Groove playing that night. That night, we'll just have a limited menu, so we'll just have, we'll just be serving pizza and beef sandwiches. On Saturday, we have, that's August 13th, it'll be from 12:00 to 11:00 p.m. We'll have DJ music to start off the night, and then we'll have at 2:30 Renee Hain and then Jack Amico and Horizon. That night, we will have our full menu, which I will go over that in just a second. And then Sunday, we will be August 14th from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. We always have our outdoor mass with our procession. Then we have at 12:15, Nino Filino, then an accordion concert by some of our club members. Then we'll have a pasta eating contest, which is our tradition. We'll have Diva Montel and George Holmes, and then closing out the night, we'll be strung out. We will have meatball sandwiches, beef sandwiches, an Italian combo, meatballs on a boat or in a boat, masochely pizza, then we have fried ravioli, gelato, cannoli, and terrore soup. We always have children's games, we'll have a face painter, raffles, a bake sale, so it'll be a fun event. We've had it every year. It's always been so much fun, so I hope you guys can all make it.
It's been very well-run over all of these years. You guys do a fantastic job with the picnic every year.
Thank you.
So what certainly if the city council would like to make any comments to Ally?
All of diet food.
I know. Well, we have salad, too. I forgot to mention that.
Boring.
So if you're a salad type person, you can have that. That's what we come for.
And fat-free popcorn.
Yes.
Well, good luck with everything.
Thank you.
It's always a lot of fun.
Thanks.
Music's always great. I can hear it at my house sometimes.
You're that close.
I am that close, so it's kind of cool.
Very nice.
Okay, as long as we have Ally at the podium, I would ask for council's concurrence to deviate to the mayor's report to the three agenda items, and we can take care of business here in regards to the American Italian Cultural Society.
Can I ask a question of the chief?
Pardon me?
Can I have a question for the chief?
Let's do these first.
Okay.
All right.
I'd like to ask them if they ever got a hold of him about the police detail?
Yes, we have that all under control.
It's all taken care of.
Yeah, and it'll be at the next meeting, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to bring it to you all at the next meeting. We're just going over the, making sure the dates and times, and we have everything squared away. All right, well, good, thank you. Just wanted to make sure it was all getting taken care of.
Thank you.
I know that the chief's been working with Dan, and the contract will be before you at our next city council meeting on the 20th.
All right, well, good, thank you.
Okay? All right, so the first agenda item for the American Italian Cultural Society is the approval of a waiver of a liquor license, a three-day liquor license for Festa Italiana. That would be for Friday, August 12th, Saturday, August 13th, and Sunday, August 14th. Motion would be in order.
So we'll just present it.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the approval of the waiver of the three-day liquor license for Festa Italiana. Questions or comments? Roll call, please, Chris.
Nate Albert.
Upstate.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, the second agenda item would be for the American Italian Cultural Society also for approval of a permit waiver for all of the associated signage for Festa Italiana and also for that week. Motion would be in order.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Sapidi for waiver of the signage permit fees for Festa Italiana for their festival. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
And Nate Albert.
Upstate.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And the last agenda item is also for the American Italian Cultural Society. It'll be the approval of a road closure and for the use of one of our police officers for the parade, which will be on Sunday after the 11:00 a.m. mass followed for the short parade throughout the neighborhood. Motion would be in order.
I thought he brought it up, it's going to go in the work session.
That's for the security part. This is just for the parade.
Okay. Some move, just presenting. Second.
We have motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the approval of the closure of the roads for the parade along with the use of one of our police officers. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Upstate.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, you guys are all set. If you have any problems with the state liquor license, feel free to give us a ring. You're more than welcome to come back if you want to the meeting before the festival, the first one in August, if you would like to address the council for that time also. Just again, for some promotion for, for your festival, that would be on Monday, August 1st.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, you guys have a great night.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you.
No one would be mad at you if you had any samples of anything that night.
Some move. Maybe we could make it happen. Have a little of the other.
Cannolis, cannolis.
Don't be mad about that at all. I'm just saying.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we'll move back to our agenda, to our city attorney, Chris Spacius, here this evening. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening. I have nothing to report.
Any questions of our city attorney?
Good to see you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris. Our city administrator, Jim Marino, is excused for this evening, so I will take over his portion of the meeting for here. You have before you an approval of resolution for amendment number two to the residential electrical aggregation agreement with MC Squared Energy Services LLC to administer the municipal electric aggregation program for the next 24 months. You do have all the information in the contract in your packet. We also have with us Dave Hoover from NYMEC is here, so I would invite Dave to come to the podium, and he will walk everyone through the process here, and then certainly he'll answer any questions that anybody may have. Dave?
Thank you, thank you. Good to be here again. Just by way of background, real quick, NYMEC, we help you purchase the electricity for your water pumping operations for the municipal facilities and also for your street lighting. We do that in a group bid with about $100 other northern Illinois municipalities. What we're talking about tonight, though, and by the way, both of those facilities are contracted through NEX here, which is really good because the current state of the power markets is a little crazy. We'll get into it in a second. What we're talking about tonight is municipal aggregation, and what municipal aggregation is, in a summary, is once a municipality passes a referendum, then the municipality can act as a purchasing agent to see if they can find more favorable purchasing terms for their residents' home electric bills. And, and you've had the program in place for a while, and residents are able to take advantage of those, they're notified, and if they have any concerns or reservations, they can opt out of that program at all. I think you guys were in the first handful of the first municipalities in northern Illinois in 2011 who started the municipal aggregation program, and so kudos to you all for being out front on that. For the, for the, for a couple of years after we started the program, we had very favorable rates that we were able to procure vis-à-vis the ComEd rate, and so those savings accrued directly to the residents on their home electric bills. We had a couple of years where we suspended the program, and then about in 2018, we started the program back up. The current program just matches the ComEd rate for residents, so there are no savings for the residents. We match the ComEd rate. Their ComEd rate actually changes month to month, and so our suppliers match that on a month-to-month basis. So unfortunately, there's no benefit that accrues directly to the residents, but what we, what our suppliers are able to do currently are able to offer 25% of the power which they purchase for the residents is renewable power from renewable sources, and the municipality receives $2,500 a month in remuneration from the supplier back to the municipality to be used for whatever you deem inappropriate to be. So that's been going on for, for a couple of years, and so we're here to talk about a renewal because the program is coming up for renewal in September. As I said, just by, again, unfortunately, we're in a situation where the power markets are a little out of control. Natural gas pricing and electric pricing are very highly correlated, and natural gas pricing, maybe you all noticed it last winter, is higher than it has been for quite some time. I think prices now have tripled from where they were a year ago. So we were paying somewhere in the neighborhood of 35, 40 cents for a therm for gas. Now, gas is over 92 cents per therm, and I think that the upcoming NiCor rate is, it's over a dollar, it's like a $1.20 per therm. Fortunately, we don't all use very much natural gas usage during the spring and the summer. But the reason I bring that up is that that has made the power markets pretty unfavorable for our suppliers when they go out to match the program, to renew the program. And so we are unable, are not able to find renewable rate, renewal rates that are as favorable as what you're currently enjoying. We have two suppliers that offer this program, and actually, one supplier, one supplier has actually stepped aside and said we just can't offer any renewals for any of their numbers. Fortunately, you're with a supplier called MC Squared, and they are offering renewal program. Now, it's attractive, but instead of 25% green, they can do 5% green for all the residents in your program, and instead of $2,500 a month as compensation back to the municipality, they can offer $1,000 a month. So they total up $24,000 for the two-year period. And so that's what we are presenting for renewal. We're actually pleased that we have something to offer because, again, we've gone to a few municipalities already and just said we have nothing to offer, and we have to suspend the program. So I think that speaks to the favorability of your residents' load profile, the way you all use your power, still attractive to, to MC Squared. So that's the, that's the most, that's the proposal we have before you to renew for two years at a $1,000 a month civic payment, and then there'll be 5% green energy included in the program, again, to the residents. We just match the ComEd rate.
Well, I understand the change in the financial part, but I, the world is deeming that, but I guess I just don't understand why the green aspect would go down so much.
Yeah, so it's, it's just a financial, it's just a pure financial decision. Supplier to do green energy has to go out and purchase the renewable energy certificates. There's an open market for those, and they just have to compensate for those. And so they said we want to, their proposal was they wanted to have some component of green energy because we know that it's somewhat important to you, and so kind of the minimum is 5%, and then they were able to still offer some additional cash. So it's just a, it's just a financial calculation.
Yeah, that's kind of the disappointing part to me. I know you can't help it, but we need to get greener, not less green.
Yeah, we agree with you.
Any other questions?
When you trail through all these towns you represent, do you find there are more people putting solar panels on their roofs now because of that?
They have been putting solar panels on their roofs. That has been pretty active over the last two years, and I think primarily because of the subsidies the state of Illinois offered.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, those subsided, those stopped, and, and so that's pretty much ground everything to a halt. Once we put this program in place, we'll probably come back to you in the, in the late summer or fall. We have another program that we can add on top of this, and it's called Community Solar, and it's where your residents can take advantage of solar panels, but they don't have to put on their homes. There are small solar farms, and then they can sign up for a portion of that. That's an opt-in program, and we'll ask you at that point in time is if this is important to you, do you want to endorse the program? We'll tell you more about it as we get closer, and it might be something that might be of interest to you.
It's funny you mentioned it. When I was at my doctor last week, Dr. San, he was, spent 15 minutes talking to me about solar panels, and he was talking about something very similar to that. I'm sure he'll be thrilled to hear that's a possibility.
Yeah, yeah, and again, you don't have to put solar panels. There are small, there's small farms, solar farms, that'll be in northern Illinois, and basically, your residents, if they sign up, would, you know, would take the load off of about two or four panels, I'll just say, and then that would accrue to that. And so it's, it's a good program, and there might even be some actual savings. Usually, there's a premium for that, so actually, it might be a little reduction in that cost, and they can still support the renewal.
Well, there was somebody going around our neighborhood, several people signed up for it. My neighbor across the street just got them put on their roof, and I guess they had a pretty interesting program. She's going to come over and tell me about it because I'm very interested in that.
Good.
And you don't have to pay for it. She said you just lease it for a fee a month.
Yeah, right.
Which is kind of cool.
Yeah, there have been folks going door-to-door. Obviously, none of our suppliers do that.
Right.
And so they've kind of gone through phase one. They've built all those out, so we're waiting for new production to be built, and we're in contact with some of those suppliers as they build those, and we'll, we'll make that a word for you.
Thank you.
Now, under this program, would the residents be able to opt out, or?
In the program that we're talking about tonight, that we, yeah, with MC Squared, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, any resident in any aggregation program can opt out at any, at any time for any reason, and there's no charge.
So if they don't, aren't aware of the opting out, do they have to, if they don't say they want to opt out, are they automatically in?
Correct. They'll be, they'll be notified, they'll be notified by mail.
Thank you.
And, and just to be clear, let me, if I can, just to, I'll get into the weeds here a little bit, but our supplier doesn't serve 100% of your residents in the program. Every, every resident has their own individual load, shape, and profile, and they all have a different cost to serve from our supplier's point of view. So what they do is they pick the favorable ones, and the, and the ones that aren't as favorable, they leave at ComEd. Now, I know that having two different groups of residents in town is problematic, but let me just make it very, very clear, it doesn't matter what group you're in because you're both served, you're both going to get your bill from ComEd, and you're going to be billed at the identical rate, okay? One will come from our supplier, MC Squared, the other will be supplied by ComEd. And so that's, that's the way they're able to offer this program. So just to be clear, not 100% of your residents will receive letters on this renewal, only those who are involved with their accounts at MC Squared.
And those rates, if ComEd rates fluctuate, then these fluctuate also along with ComEd?
Yeah, and there's, because I tell you, the power markets are a little crazy. The current ComEd rate, well, until last week, or the year previous, were on 7.8 cents per kilowatt hour, and starting this month, it's going up to 9.8 cents. So, yeah, so not only is gas kind of crazy, but electric follows, and prices are going up right now. And, but to your point, if there's any change in the ComEd rate, and which they do change every, we mirror that every single month.
Well, I think that the, the residents were getting very favorable rebates back in '11, '12, and '13.
Yeah.
When the market was kind of on the whack.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's when the savings were really evident. Now, the market has really opened out.
We always test it, just to be clear. We, every time we do any sort of renewal, we always test to see if there are more favorable rates, fixed rates available to the residents. We always test that before we go to our programs, matching program, and the ComEd, excuse me, MC Squared's offer was 11.3 cents compared to 9.8 cents.
Wow.
So that'll just tell you how kind of crazy the market is right now.
Do you have any information about Residence Energy that were out in Crest Hill last week?
The name is?
Residence, I think it was, Residence Energy.
Residence Energy.
They were out knocking door-to-door.
Yeah.
Do you have any information, like?
I don't.
Because residents, they asked, like, they should go that route, but do you compare to them, or nothing like that?
There's a listing on the internet, if you, of a lot of the different public offerings. It's at pluginillinois.org. The ICC puts that out there, and then they, and suppliers will put their offerings there.
Okay.
Just as a rule of thumb, as a rule of thumb, we don't find offers there that are more favorable than the ComEd rate. They may have a teaser rate for three months or six months. A friend of mine sent me his mother's bill the other day, and they were at 14 and 1/2 cents, and that's when the ComEd rate was 7.8.
Okay.
So unfortunately, this is, you know, not, I'll make a generic statement, I'll cross it over, but I think a, a number of suppliers take advantage of folks who don't pay attention, sign up, give them a good rate for two months, and then just escalate the rate. And actually, in this particular case, the rate was 14 and 1/2, and they're going to 15.9 next month. So I, you know, I would just encourage, my mom lives in Illinois, I taught her the same ComEd rate.
You have to read the fine print.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that there, I'm not saying there's nobody who offers a good rate, I'm just saying, we just haven't seen any. We check those offerings, you know, pretty regularly.
And you said we go on Wilt's website to check them out?
It's called, it's called www.pluginillinois, no spaces, pluginillinois.org, and then there'll be a place that says compare offers now, and you pick ComEd, and they'll, they'll give you a laundry list of offers there.
Okay, thank you, because that's really important, because they, they do lie at the door, and they tell them they're going to give the best rate.
You know, I, I can tell you stories, and, and I'm sure there's some good ones, but I would not.
And Dave, is that one of those things where they, they got an introductory rate for, say, six months, and then it just goes to a high rate and stays there for the length of?
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen that often. I can't say that everybody's that way, but I do know that the less scrupulous ones will do that. I think their theory is people pay attention for a month or two after they get their, their bills, and then after about six months, they quit paying attention. And yeah, and that's where we've seen them, you know, 14, 15 cents is, is almost double the ComEd rate.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just.
Thank you.
Well, that Resident Energy, I was trying to tell, that's the one we got the email about, that people were complaining. But when they come to my door, the first thing I ask them is for their permit.
Yeah.
Oh, well, my boss says, "Well, did you know that you can't come to the door without one? Anybody out there has to have it? So, you have two options here. You go get your permit and your copy, or I'll just let the local police know you're out here without a permit." You never see people run so far for their trucks, because they're trying to mess with the, there's a lot of elderly people out there.
Yeah.
Who listen to what they say, because I get the phone calls. They said they could do this, don't listen to them. They said they're with the city, don't listen to them. So, it's really kind of sad. I always do that. I put the fear of God into them, every time.
Yeah, we can put something out on Facebook if we want, Steve.
I heard a community that, you know, police actually went out there and told them, "You can't do this."
Mm-hmm.
And later they did, they ran the other side of town.
Yeah.
So, not, I'm not here, I'm not saying.
No, I know.
But I mean, yeah, I, I would, I would suggest, if you don't want to be part of the program, if you have concerns of our program, just go to ComEd and that's where we recommend it, it's the safest place.
Let me ask you another question. About five, six years ago, maybe even longer, they had wind power, all those windmills. What happened to that project? Now, you don't hear about that anymore. Is that, is that a bad subject to talk about now or something, or what happened?
No, they're still building, they're still building wind and they're still building windmills. They're, yeah, and they obviously haven't gone away. They may just not be advertising it. And I know the, the big expansion right now is offshore on the east and west coats, coast, that's where it's really going. But, but yeah, the cost of wind power has come down and they're still, people are still building wind power. You know, the Pritzker wants to be, I think, 100% green by 2050 is what his target is. So, they'll be building more.
Look, because the only one I ever saw was down around Odella or something down there, a big field down there.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. And Indiana, northeast Indiana, northwest Indiana has a lot of.
Yeah, Wisconsin has a lot of them too, I think.
I think Iowa is one of the top in the country, so, when it must blow in Iowa.
I just thought maybe if they did it now, it's done, it's over with, they're going to something else.
No, that's still, it's still going, it's still big. They're, they're trying, you know, the whole, the whole country is trying to phase out of fossil fuels and get to, to more renewable sources, so, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Anyway, well, we'll move forward. We need, we need to finalize some things tomorrow. I'll talk to Jim about that.
Yes.
And I think you've had a chance, have you seen the actual amendment? I don't know if Jim sent that to you.
Yeah.
Okay, that's pretty straightforward.
Pretty simple.
Yeah, very straightforward, so.
Yeah, and I will say, Dave, we've been together now for 11 years.
Yeah.
And I will tell you, you are a very honest, reputable company with NYMEC, and you have not steered us in the wrong direction over 11 years, so.
Well, we appreciate that.
I think that we all value your advice. You know more about the electricity and the rates and everything in your little finger than I had known my whole life, so.
Well, it's good to be a big vision, small mind.
Yeah.
Anyway, we appreciate the relationship. And our theory is, let's do what's right for the customer.
Correct.
And we'll have a customer for a long time, so.
So, I would ask for a motion from City Council for a resolution.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
So moved, yes.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Sepiti for a resolution approving Amendment Number Two to Residential Electric Aggregation Agreement with MC Squared Energy Services LLC. Questions or comments? Roll call, please, Chris.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries resolution 1154.
Okay, Dave, Jim will be back tomorrow, so I'm sure he'll.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our Public Works Department. Our Director of Public Works, Mark Seifer, good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The only agenda item I have before you this evening is one we discussed two weeks ago now, for emergency well pull and motor pump replacement for well seven. This would be with Lane Western for not to exceed amount of $46,027 once they pull the pump and see the actual damage of the pump and motor. If there is a change order, that would come before you, but at this point, it is for not to exceed amount of $46,027.
So moved as presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Albert for the emergency well pull and motor pump replacement to Lane Western, not to exceed $46,027 for well seven. Questions or comments? This is Elros, correct?
That is correct.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
And John Boucher.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
That is all I have for you this evening, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Any questions of Public Works? All right, thanks, Mark. Moving on, our City Engineer, Ron Wedeman, good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items for you, for Council tonight. The first one is to approve an ordinance for the establishment of a pond self-inspection program, which will amend sections, several sections of Chapter 15.20.
Motion would be in order?
So moved.
We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Boucher for an ordinance amending Section 15 dash 20 dash 170. Much discussion was held on this at the work session two weeks ago, so I'll just ask if there's any more questions or comments in regards to the verbiage.
So, Ron, is, are we anticipating having these this July 1st?
I have to talk to Mark. I'd like to get one round out this year, at least. I don't know if we'll get the second, you know, whoever doesn't comply the first time probably won't, but yeah, we gotta, we'll have to get one round out.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries ordinance 1904.
Which one?
1904.
Just to hear the opinion, Scott.
Second item I have for the Council tonight is to approve an engineering agreement, I'm sorry, to approve that the mayor executed a proposal for design and engineering services as discussed above with Christian Burke for not seeing amount of $28,590. This would be for designing two of the three walls out on Theodore. These walls need to be designed by a structural engineer. One of them I did in-house already, but this is actually money that we're gonna get reimbursed back from the state.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the approval of the Theodore wall design at Highland and Cora to Christopher Burke Engineering not to exceed $28,590. Questions or comments?
Well, I'm just glad they're, they're doing, like, poured ones now, right?
Yeah, we're gonna do poured ones, they're actually, actually gonna be a little bit different than the ones that we just set up. We're gonna actually have an imprint on there of something, a limestone or.
But it'll still be poured.
We haven't, I figured out what the imprint's gonna be yet, but something give a little more visual look to it.
Right.
And obviously, there's two walls that we're short on. The goal will be next year to try to tackle one and then maybe the next one, because those walls are gonna be about 100 grand, you know, so, but at least let's get some of these done since we got the reimbursement coming.
Did you say we're gonna get reimbursed back for that?
Yes, this is part of the Rebuild Illinois. The city put money in for this, $65,000 back in 2018 or '19 when the request was made. I'm not, I don't have all the privies of the details of if they were specific walls or not, we just know that they were walls along Theodore. So, I know that the city's already changed a couple out and we're going to actually, the one that I designed, we're actually gonna eliminate altogether and grade it out. We're just gonna move a ComEd bill back. That way, you don't have to worry about any maintenance of that wall in the future. The other two, we can't eliminate, but again, we're gonna replace those with the, it'd be a T concrete wall with some type of limestone or some type of finish on the outside.
Is that in front of the homes over there?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that one's from 2018, that was when Dave Vanderbilt.
Yes.
Here with Christopher Burke, so, it does look much better with the solid wall than all the blocks, because the, the blocks pop out and everything else, so.
Yep, exactly. You can see it right now, exactly what it looks like when you have a standing retaining wall.
When they put up those walls up, did they put the glue between the bricks, between the stones?
With the state, the ones that are up there now?
Yeah.
Probably not.
When we, when we put this new one up, were we gonna put the glue, the glue together?
We're, we're doing a solid concrete wall. It will not be a stacked retaining wall. It'll be a solid concrete wall.
They're gonna put the weed poles in there too, right?
Yes, we'll have, there'll be, there'll be a drain tile behind it, weed poles down at the bottom, so it'll properly drain. Sidewalks in the front will have to be replaced, you know, to the back of curb.
Wouldn't, wouldn't a stone wall look nicer than a brick wall or a concrete wall?
Well, it's gonna be a concrete wall with an imprint of a stone or a limestone type look to it.
Like a stamped, like stamped concrete, John.
Right, stamped concrete, not like what they, you know, the walls weren't as tall, so it was kind of, the ones that they did before, really couldn't stamp those, but these are so tall that just to have just a slab of concrete, get some texture on there, some look.
All right, roll call, please, Chris.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And that's all I have unless there's any questions for me.
Okay, any questions, City Engineer?
Just quick, are we doing any sidewalk repairs this year?
Yes, bids were open last week. I will evaluate them this week. We'll probably have those on the agenda at the next council meeting for, to approve that contract. J&amp;J Newell was a little bet, a little bidder. Obviously, prices are very high, so I have to take a look at our MFT program to see if I can do what was originally programmed or if I need to make a cut, but that's what I'll be doing this week.
Thank you.
And then hopefully, that work will start sometime middle of July, carry through September, early October.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Moving on, Community Development Department, there are no agenda items this evening. Our Economic and Community Development Director, Tony Budzikowski, was ill today. He'll be back in a few days. The reports are in your packet. Moving on to the Police Department, our Police Chief, Ed Clark, good evening, Ed.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I have one agenda item this evening. It is the addition of no parking prohibitions for Enterprise Boulevard, Chernobyl Drive, Ladice Parkway. We discussed this issue at the May 23 work session. And as we discussed, we'll be placing that to help with trucks that have been parking there. We've had a lot of garbage that were thrown in the cul-de-sac. Yeah, just the general backup due to the parking. We will be monitoring the best we can and try to alleviate any issues with parking in other locations. But if you see any, please let me know and we'll try to adjust accordingly. So, I'm formally asking for approval.
So moved as presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Albert for the no parking ordinance on Enterprise, Ladice, and Chernobyl claims. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
And Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries ordinance 1905.
Chief, just curious, let's say we put the signs up and we put it in effect and they continue to do this, and I know it's hard to have somebody sit there all day, is there a way to maybe put cameras out there?
We definitely could put cameras out there.
I mean, even like a wireless, you know, camera?
Yeah, it'd have to be like a solar type camera or battery powered.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, because if it, if it keeps going on, even after the signs are off.
I think, I think after a few.
Well, we'll see.
Few reminders, the fence is.
We'll see.
Yeah.
Well, it's just kind of out there, you know, it's not like it's right around.
Yeah, you gotta purposely go through that.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I agree. I agree, yeah, I, I, it's something we consider. Also, the property has cameras as well, I mean, they could, some of the, some of the business owners are very welcoming to this.
Okay, good.
So, if.
Tell them to turn their cameras off.
Yeah, they'll definitely help us out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Mayor's Report. We took care of all the agenda items, just some updates. I had the privilege and honor of attending the Will County Police Memorial on May 19 along with Chief Clark and Deputy Chiefs Opiola and Dobchak, and Officer Finolio was there representing Crest Hill also. Very well-done memorial ceremony for all the police officers in Will County that lost their, lost their lives in the line of duty. Also attended the Chaney Manji graduation on May 24th. There, I believe there were 69 graduates from Chaney Manji. Again, well-run program from Chaney Manji. And then, then on May 26th, attended the Richland graduation. It was about 89 students there from Richland Grade School. They both had beautiful nights, so congratulations to all the graduates at all levels throughout the city of Crest Hill. Congratulations and good luck with all your future endeavors. And I had the opportunity to be in the Caroline Lakes Veterans Day, or Memorial Day Parade that was put on by the Caroline, Caroline Lakes Veterans Committee. That was on May 28th. Again, they do a fantastic job with a lot of participation for that parade. And then finally, our Memorial Day Ceremony was held on Monday, May 30th, one week ago today. It was a little bit on the warm side. It was very, very windy, but we made it through. So, I'd certainly want to thank everybody that participated in the program. Our two guest speakers, Don Lawler and Chester Bozek, were both World War II veterans, so thank you to them for their words of wisdom. The Frankfurt Brass Band, again, they are very well for the musical entertainment for the program. I certainly want to thank members of the City Council that were there, our Treasurer, Glenn Conklin, Alderman Claudia Gazal, Alderman Nate Albert, and Alderman Joe Kubal were there, so I thank them for their presence and being there. Again, I believe it was a very solemn ceremony for all of our veterans who have passed away and naturally for our two police officers, Tim Simonson and Jim Nink, who were killed in the line of duty in the city of Crest Hill. So, again, we, we, I believe it was a very solemn ceremony to honor all of these individuals. We certainly don't want to forget any of them, because it was because of them that we have the freedoms that we enjoy today. So, my final comment, it would be for Father's Day coming up here in a couple of weeks, I wish all of the fathers, all of the grandfathers, congratulations, and I hope that you have a wonderful day with your family and friends. With that, I'll answer any questions that anybody may have.
I, me, Mayor, since our city minister is not here, would like to address you personally about a major concern that I have, that it's been happening for a while right now. And you probably guys wondering why I'm bringing this to a council meeting, so all the council be aware and so we can be on the same page, since we can't, it's a quorum if we speak individually or. I think we have touched on the subject many times so far, since Jim was hired. We've had vision meeting, we have IML personnel that came here and did a presentation for us, and I'm very upset. I'm very upset, very disappointed, and very discomfort with the communication level that is happening right now. I think we have some of the best department heads. We sat here many times, over and over, saying they are the professionals, let them do their job, and they are the professionals. I think they have proved all these years how professional, how quick they work, how quick they answer their phone calls, and we are presenting the resident, and we work for the resident. So, if I call Public Work Director, he gets on something right away. I don't feel the need that any department heads has to get permission to speak to an elected official. It is my job and my duty as an elected official to represent the resident. And I think it's their job and duty as well to respond to the council and to do the job for the residents. I mean, I don't know if any of you are happy about this, but I'm not comfortable with the situation.
Yep.
Would we be able to get one, um, say in August, the first one?
You should be able to get one at the end of June, that's six months.
Well, the budget just got passed.
The audit, the audit's gonna start here real quickly, though. Everybody has to realize that.
The only thing that I would caution you on is that we have a, uh, just it's, it's cyclic in, in nature, so there are, uh, like the cops, they come right out of the gates and they spend a bunch, bunch of money, and it's just their nature. Um, and then we have certain, certain times that we, we receive income, uh, like the, uh, the tax levy, so that comes in twice a year. So there's a lot of things that are ins and outs that come at different times, but, um, I'll talk with Lisa on how best maybe to present that and whether she needs to be in attendance or whether you'd like just to, uh, a report in your, in your council packet and her report personally on a quarterly basis? Maybe that'd be a good way to go, and we just kind of throw out a couple of exceptions. So like maybe we're flush on the income side because of a release of the tax levy and we're, or we're long on the expense side because of the, so we'll, we'll try and float a couple of things in and out of there to give you a, a true idea of where we're at.
Okay.
In income and expenses relative to when those, when those occur. Is that good?
Yep.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, committee lays on reports. Anybody? City council comments? Anything anybody would like to share with their constituents? We'll begin with Alderman Dyke this evening.
Uh, nothing at this time here.
Uh, Alderman Boucher?
Yeah, nothing else.
Or two Alderman Giselle?
Like to, uh, announce that at June 15th, um, we will be holding the, the Smith Ad Park. Um, it's going to be a good one this time. We're gonna have a touch of truck giveaways, police department, fire department, public works director. We're gonna have hot dogs for the kids and the parents. So join us at the park, Fields of Long Meadow Park is located on Coventry and Borio on June 16th at 6:00 PM. Look forward to see most of you, if it's not all of you.
Or three Alderman Person Overland?
Well, this is my last time to remind you about the 80th Annual Ladis Memorial, uh, which will be this Sunday, June 12th at 11 o'clock at Ladis Memorial Park. It's really, um, I really hope to see a lot of you out there because we haven't had it for two years due to COVID. And, um, we've worked really hard to get the park in shape for this, and I want to thank all the people. We had over 20 people come out and help us, um, work on the park, which was really nice. A lot of the people from the Czech Republic came down and, um, my employee that didn't work last time, Martha, she came out again, so it was nice to get a lot of people out there to weed and prune things. And, um, I was on the radio, uh, Friday talking about it, and I had just found an article that, that talked about how, um, after the massacre, the one thing that is still there that was there prior to that is one pear tree in a row of three pear trees. And it's like a historical thing now, this pear tree over there. And so, um, I found that out, and when I was on the radio show, I was talking about it, I said, now I'm on a, a mission to get a pear tree over there in our memorial. And before the show was over, um, a group, Juliet Pride, um, and I want to thank them. That was so kind of them. They offered to fund the tree. They're gonna, they're gonna pay for the tree. I'm looking into what type of tree it is, but I was so happy, and when I shared all this with everybody, um, yesterday, they, they, they weren't aware of it either, so they were giddy about it, getting this pear tree, because of the meaning behind it. So, um, that, that's my next big win. So thank you again to Juliet Pride for that. And on a personal note, I have to give a big 90th birthday. Happy birthday out there to our own Crest Hill historian, Little Miss Crest Hill, Jeannie Juristic. Yesterday was her 90th birthday. And I went over there and visited with her and stuff, but I, I still wanted to wish her that. So happy birthday, Ms. Crest Hill. Thank you.
Alderman Sapidi?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Or four Alderman Albert?
Nothing, Mayor.
Alderman Kubal?
Uh, Mayor, uh, just, uh, one real quick, uh, request to, uh, Crest Hill residents. The Park District is still looking for feedback online, online, uh, their, their website for Memorial Park. Uh, we talked about it here a couple, two, three weeks ago. They had a meeting out there. Not too many of the residents, uh, were able to make that meeting. I think only about 10 folks, but they're, they want to improve that park and they want to add some amenities out there, and they're looking for feedback. So anybody that visits Memorial Park, that lives near Memorial Park, should go online, uh, the, uh, Park District and put some stuff on there that you'd like to see in that park. That's it, Ray.
Okay, thank you. Public comment? Anyone like to address city council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. To our city attorney, Chris Spasha, is there a need for an executive session, Chris?
I, I don't believe there is. I think Jim said he wanted to put that over to the next meeting.
Correct, to the next, uh, city council meeting.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
We have a motion for adjournment by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Boucher. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
And Claudia Giselle.
Okay, meeting.
Motion carries, thank you.
Meeting is adjourned at 7:59 PM. Thank you and good meetings. Good luck.